I'd like to call to order the October 1st, 2025 special meeting to order. First on the agenda is the board, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as posted. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as posted. Onto item two, public comments. We will abide by the same rules as we generally follow in the board meeting. So I would ask all the individuals that signed up to speak to stay focused on the issues before the board or other matters. With that being said, I would like to call Andy Massey, Shar Fitzwater, and Ms. Sidney Van Bullock.
Good afternoon to the Board of Trustees and district personnel. My name is Andy Massey, and I'm excited to see the bylaws of the Charleston County School District Education Foundation on the agenda and look forward to their adoption. Providing nonprofit support to public education is crucial to meeting the needs of all students, especially those who encounter societal obstacles to quality education. While several questions have been addressed by the administration regarding these bylaws, I would like to focus on one specific area and encourage the Board of Trustees and administration to consider term limits and staggered terms for voting foundation board members. As a support for term limits, I quote roadmap for education foundations. Quote, "The rationale behind term limits is that change is good for the board and for the culture of the organization. And if your board members are really contributing, they will likely need a break after two or three terms." End quote. Quote, "Per the independent sector's principles of good governance, we strongly recommend term limits." End quote. Regarding staggered terms, this is from the independent sector's principles of good governance. Quote, "Organizations that do limit the terms of board service should consider establishing a staggered term process that provides a continual flow of new participants while retaining a cadre of more experienced members." End quote. Thanks for allowing us to engage, ask questions, and provide our thoughts.
Good afternoon, I'm Shar Fitzwater. First, I want to say I strongly support this foundation, and I love the idea of having support for all of our students who need an opportunity to have extra insights. The programs that are initiated by the superintendent and her team are valuable and need extra support economically in many instances. I also want to mention that I'm grateful for the FAQs that were developed. I'd like to say that there were great questions in there. I think there were like 49 or 50. And in reading them, you get a better understanding of what this organization is intended to do and how it will operate and what considerations there might be in bringing it forward. Also, thank you for the book. Great reading, spent some time with it, dug in, and I care a lot about what happens with it. So I'd like to say that there are two things that I'd appreciate if the board would pay attention to today. One of them is, please ensure the specific purposes are clear, stipulating just like the FAQs said, that this is for public schools, not for private schools, not for public-private partnerships. And clearly align the purpose with the district's mission and purpose. The second thing is, I believe that there are opportunities to improve the bylaws. Many of these things highlighted again in the FAQs that will enhance its effectiveness and its ability to operate well in this district. The FAQs have been a great source for insight, also looking at the details of the book and other things. I know this is a lot in this document. I have walked through contracts before and started organizations, and I can tell you, this is an important cornerstone. Please be sure to have the strong structure that will operate effectively, and thank you for all you do. So Dr. Fitzwater, the author of the book is here, I believe she can autograph it for you. She's right here.
Thank you.
Hi, Sidney Van Bullock. I'm going to keep my comments short again. I just wanted to reiterate what I said last week about the public-private partnerships. Legally, they are a different entity than our charter schools. And in the FAQ, it stated that this organization was not going to be putting money towards private partnerships, but in the bylaws, it does not specifically state that. It only states charters. So for just legal purposes, like, please change that language because that will be important. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. There were two written comments. The topic of one was regarding the formation of support foundation for the CCSD. And the second one was about, I guess we'll pass this on to Mr. Barori, school bus driving.
Thank you, we'll do so, Mr. Grabowski.
With that being said, we will move on to item 3A. The question before the board is on adopting the CCSD education foundation bylaws. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Question, the way that motion is stated, it sounds like we're going to adopt the bylaws before we have discussion on each section. I just want to be sure that we, by voting for this motion, I want us to discuss these bylaws, but I don't want to vote on this motion and think that we've already approved these bylaws as they're posted.
The chair will entertain a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Bullock.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
I believe our parliamentarian prescribed the procedure for the section-by-section review. If you would consider asking him to explain, I don't know that another motion is necessary now that there's a motion and a second on the floor to adopt.
It's, having gone through this, and I respect the parliamentarian's review, but understanding what they're attempting to do, I still think it's proper for the second motion for seratorning.
Do we need to?
I can only answer the inquiry by saying it is customary that bylaws of this nature are dealt with section by section. Therefore, your motion to take it as seriatum is not necessary, but if the chair chooses not to do what is customary, then your motion would be appropriate.
If we can unanimously agree to, that we are going to go through this section by section, I will agree with the parliamentarian, and the second motion is not necessary. So what would happen, as I understand, Mr. Marrow, you can correct me, as we go through each article, article, it will be as perfected if there are motions to amend the language, and then we will vote on the full motion, I mean, the bylaws at the end.
You would take out each amendment independently and individually, assuming any proposed amendment receives a second. It would be debated, it would be voted on, and that matter would be put to bed.
On that article?
Yes, sir.
We go article by article.
But some of the articles have multiple pieces.
Correct.
So we're going to consider each piece within the article?
So as each article comes up, I will ask, you know, that we consider it, and then we will take, with, it's my understanding that we will, we must address two motions. We can't have more than two motions per line item.
Two amendments per?
Right, right, that we need to address those and close them out. And then if there are further motions, we would move on through that article. We all in agreement?
Okay, so this, just so we could be clear, we're going to do section by section. And for sections that have longer articles, we will take the time to go through each one of those paragraphs.
Absolutely, in other words, we will not finish with a article unless all motions to amend are acknowledged and accepted.
You've got a minimum of only two per section?
You can only have two open motions. In other words, we don't want to get lost in a sea of motions. I think what we need to do is just get going, and then the parliamentarian can lead us on if we get astray. Ms. Bailey, I see, and Mr. Hollingstead, can you hear us? And Ms. Bailey, you're on mute. Oh, you're good, I see your finger up. Mr. Hollingstead, we cannot see you, but I see that you're on mute. Can you hear us? Moving on. The first, Article 1 is now before the board. Any debates or amendments must be combined to Article 1. Are there any motions to be made regarding to Article 1? If there is no further debate or amendments to Article 1, it is perfected, and Article 2 is now before the board. Is there any debate? Any motions?
I just wanted to, so it says, "Foundation shall be an independent and autonomous organization." That puts it in a very independent position. I guess, for me, it was the last sentence, "The corporation shall be an independent and autonomous organization." Its periodration shall be perpetual. You know, if it's going to be connected to CCSD, I feel like it should have some language there. You know, "The corporation shall be an organization established under the oversight of, and accountable to Charleston County District School Board of Trustees. It shall not act in a manner inconsistent with the board policies or direction," or CCSD. And I'm suggesting adding something to that effect.
I'm not sure if I understand you.
So?
What you're asking.
It basically separates the foundation from everything, CCSD, in that statement, does it not? "The corporation shall be independent and autonomous."
Mr. Prentice, would you like to address that?
Yes, and as we get started, I want to acknowledge two folks that we have in the room today that have contributed greatly to this work. Of course, you know, Mr. Arnold's our executive director of the Education Foundation. But as Ms. Huggins indicated, we also have Robin Callahan, who is the author of the best practices book that we shared with the board recently at your last meeting. And so she spent 16 years leading an education foundation, led the National Association of Education Foundations, and also administers the credentialing program for education foundation leaders throughout the country. And so as we go through and have questions, I'm going to encourage her and Mr. Arnold to assist me in answering those questions. And so I believe it may be appropriate for her to weigh in on that. I know that's some standard language, because this is a separate 501(c)(3) being established separate from the school district. And I think the other components of the bylaws that talk about the governance and oversight would probably tie that in the way that's intended. But I'll defer to her and Mr. Arnold if they have any other comments there.
Thank you, Daniel. So this is standard boilerplate language for when you're doing your organizational structure for Article 2, and your considerations can be addressed in the further language in Article 3, where it outlines that we are mirroring the interest of?
But why would we put it into the beginning part so that it's at least establishing it there? Because, right, in the definition of the organization, it does not connect it to CCSD or the Board of Trustees.
I think as I look at it, that our stronger outgoing control will come through other articles and not in Article 2. Article 2 is basically a boilerplate that just sets up the foundation and its requirements of the law. So I think, you know, I think, you know, when we look at appointments, amendment approvals, dissolution, and stuff like that, and other articles, that's more where we can put our control. But in this article, this is really just boilerplate acknowledging that the foundation is an independent.
That's correct.
Can I, so I look at these articles.
Lieber.
Sorry. Sorry. I look at these articles and, you know, that it's kind of almost like the purpose and powers need to be defined after we've gone through the subordinate articles, because eventually it's going to roll up. Because if we decide, you know, like, there's phase one and phase two. If phase two isn't, isn't within the board's desire, then this would change Article 2. And so one of my questions that was asked previously, and it specifically was that autonomous, and that was that point, phase 2. And the question that came back to us was, "An independent foundation allows for a legal pathway for community engagement and fundraisers that is otherwise unavailable to the school district. For example, multinational companies have policies regarding 501(c)(3) status for tax purposes in order to contribute or partner with the school district. The independent structure, which I assume is that phase 2, ensures the foundation can engage community partners broadly, minimizing the political influence and maximize the funding opportunities." And so I guess the question, because there's a legal pathway that, between 1 and 2, I want the citation of what that legal pathway is that's different between phase 1 and phase 2.
To that article, to address that, Mr. Chair.
And debate is good, but if there's no motion to amend, then we need to move on.
I'm happy to answer Ms. Lieber's question. You know, in terms of Ms. Jewett's recommendation, you know, if that put in the form of a motion, that can be voted on accordingly. Staff doesn't recommend any changes to Article 2 based on that and the foregoing in terms of how it's further defined in that relationship. But with respect to Ms. Lieber's question, I think the Q and A that you're referencing was really the notion that the independent organization, both phase 1 and 2, being separate from CCSD in terms of a public entity and a nonprofit entity, that nonprofit entity becomes a conduit for philanthropy to support CCSD's mission. So there's not really a, not much of a legal tie in there, as much as it is that we regularly engage with private entities that, you know, would otherwise provide grants or funding to support CCSD's mission if a nonprofit arm existed. And absent having that nonprofit arm, there's often hesitancy to provide private funding to CCSD. Of course, some of our booster clubs and, you know, foundations established directly in support of individual schools have that arm, and they're able to raise funds that way. But that was the clarification on that question. So if, you know, again, we could consider any amendments, and then those could be debated and voted on, and then we would just simply move on to the next if there weren't any further amendments.
Can I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Roberson.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Ms. Jewett. It is boilerplate language, but I was wondering, did you have some language that you wanted to recommend?
Yeah, I recommended, "The corporation shall be an organization established under the oversight of and accountability to the Charleston County School Board." "School Board. It shall not act in a manner inconsistent with board policy or direction." In order for it to, basically, that sentence would establish all the reasoning for all the other bylaws. Because in the first section, it basically doesn't have any sort of information about why we're talking about section, Articles 3, 4, any of the other articles.
So Ms. Jewett?
Would be to change that last sentence to the sentence that I just spoke.
I'll second it.
Ms. Trudy, did you catch that? So, Ms. Jewett, can you restate your motion? We can do all votes by oral, we'll do votes. That's the problem. So you're not going to be able to see, under the current platform, we have any written amendments? I think we, I think it's important, before you vote. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chair, I think there should be taken into consideration that too much control by the school district could threaten, I think, a tax-exempt status. The school district is not itself a 501(c)(3), and the school district maintains tight control, if you will, as Ms. Jewett seems to be suggesting.
Well, I'm suggesting that it, oh, sorry.
It could be that donations made by, or contributions made to the entity by someone who might be motivated, at least in part, by the tax exemption, might not be able to receive any tax exemption if the entity is tightly controlled by the school district.
And that's why in the debate section of this, which I think we have morphed into, that's why I think it's better that we, if we're going to add in stronger controls or oversight on this, that we hand it through other articles rather than the article that is acknowledging the organization of the foundation in compliance with the requirements of the IRS for tax-exempt status. Because I agree with Mr. Johnson that when you would review that, if you have too much control in that, there could be the opportunity for the IRS not to approve it.
I still think that there needs to be language that it's aligned with our policies and.
I think some of the things that we've worked on with the other articles will show
I agree.
that alignment, so.
I just think this.
Right, but this defines the whole thing.
Is there a way, just trying to work through it, is there? Go ahead.
Is there a way we could come back to this article after we go through some of the others and see if we, in fact, have settled?
If I can, just, we just clarified that case law says that tying it to the school district that way would stop us from being able to get 501(c)(3) status. It would be too connected to a government entity rather than going by the laws of.
Okay.
And this is solely the organizational, like, this is not the powers or any of the other issues that we're going to be talking about in the future. This is just so that they can get organized and get the tax-exempt clause. And I have to agree with that this is boilerplate language for that purpose.
Record states what I said.
Any further discussion or debate? There is a motion on the table, on the floor. Are you satisfied with the ways written?
But she said we wouldn't get it, right?
Trudy, what are we looking for?
Oh, okay. The last sentence. Motion to change last sentence of Article 2, not pull it up, got to get it. You know, you don't have, it's not offline. It's up now, if you refresh your screen.
There you go.
I'd ask all trustees to cast their vote.
I can't see it.
Same, same thing.
Ms. Bailey, Mr. Hollingstead, can you both vote by voice?
Are we voting on Jewett's motion, or what motion are we voting on?
That's correct, we're voting on Ms. Jewett's motion.
To add that amendment that she just spoke of?
That's correct, Ms. Bailey.
Nay.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingstead?
What was the legal point? Y'all rushed into that, and I was listening to Mr. Johnson again. What was the legal point of that again?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hollingstead, the debate's already been closed, and we really need to vote.
Vote aye.
Would you like us to read the motion to you again?
Yes. I couldn't hear that, just vote me as a yes for now.
Which is abstaining.
We're going to try one more time, Mr. Hollingstead.
Motion to change the last sentence of Article 2 to read, "The corporation shall be an organization established under the oversight of, and accountable to, the Charleston County School District Board of Trustees. It shall not act in a manner inconsistent with board policy or direction."
I vote aye.
No, I don't see Ms. Watley on. And the motion doesn't pass? Are there any further discussions regarding Article 2? Hearing none, Article 2 is perfected, and Article 3 is now before the board.
We have some edits to Article 3.
The chair recognizes Ms. Roberson.
Thank you. If I could, Dr. Temple and I have worked extremely hard. If, if I could, Dr. Temple and I have worked extremely hard and with some community members and organizations on the bylaws. So what we have done to make it easier, our edits, we have on glow cards that we will be sharing with the language that we propose. It's written, the language that we are proposing to take out is crossed out in red and the language that we are proposing is in green. And I have copies for each one and we would do this for each of our amendments.
And how can we get that to Mr. Hollingshead and Ms. Bailey?
We, we have to take up each one.
Okay, so they'll hear it. Okay. Here, what index cards?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, be patient with us. This is the teacher in us. We're trying to figure out how to help, help us all because this, it's a lot to think about. So I move to amend Section 3.02, a specific purposes to read as follows, and the, the place where the changes is in Part A. So on the cards we gave you, the black part is how it would be. The backside shows the language changes in green and what we discarded is in red. So I'll read it. "The corporation is to be formed for educational and charitable purposes within the meaning of IRC Section 501(c)(3) and in this connection shall be operated, A, to promote educational and charitable endeavors that align with the school district mission and vision as stated in the strategic plan for, one, the improvement and enrichment of the quality of public schools excluding charter and public-private partnership schools in the school district, and Roman numeral two, the increase of community support for and involvement in the school district."
Mr. Chairman, I just got a message from Mr. Hollingshead that he can't hear, so we need to do a sound check for Mrs. Bailey and Mr. Hollingshead. Mrs. Bailey, can you hear? It appears you can. Mr. Hollingshead, are you able to come off mute?
Yes, I can hear better now.
New ears now? Okay, thank you. If everybody will just.
And I think, I think what's important, Dr. Temple, Ms. Roberson, and Ms. Jewett, and Ms. Lieber, and Ms. McKenney, is that we really have to speak into these mics. If we can hear it out there, they can hear it out in cyber world.
Okay, I second the motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion as promoted, presented?
Yes, I have a question. So when it reads that align with the school district mission and vision, both of those items can change over time. So I'm concerned about that being included because that could be a moving target.
What I would say to that, Ms. McKenney, is that as long as, even if it changes, it'd still be aligned with whatever the new mission and vision is. So even though that may change, this, this bylaws will remain, that it will, should always be aligned with the district's mission or vision regardless of the number change.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Ms. Bailey?
Okay, I, I understand what Ms. McKenney is saying. If the vision of the school district changes, how will that affect these bylaws? But over the course of time, could not the bylaws be amended?
Yes, it could. But I guess just what I, I said to Ms. McKenney, Ms. Bailey, if the mission and vision of the district changes, it's still written in the bylaws that it should be aligned to whatever that mission and vision is of the district.
Okay, I understand. I got you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hollingshead?
I had to unmute myself. So, Ms. Roberson, would you just say it again? Say that one more time. Is that similar to what Ms. Jewett was saying or that's different?
No, it's very similar.
And I think that's what we were saying, that as we work through the different sections, we will address some of the concerns that Ms. Jewett put out at first as we work through the sections.
Right, and Mr. Hollingshead, if, if you look at the previous article dealt with organization, now we're at purposes and powers.
Okay, I just had that one question.
Yeah, but you are correct.
And, and I do think that the amendment in favor of it does clarify as brought up in, in public comment and we've heard through, in numerous discussions, that we'd be very specific, that the improvement and the enrichment of the quality of public schools excluding charter and public-private partnership schools. So I, I do think that that language is definitely needed. I, I kind of struggle with the mission and vision, but.
Something we do all the time.
It just seems like it would be kind of been, does staff have any input on this?
I would agree that giving the clarity of your green language does work. And I would implore you to reconsider striking the, through the solicitation of funds and partnerships in accordance with the goals, strategies, and initiatives of the superintendent and board of trustees. This gives some clarity on our role as, as delivering and it also gives you a little, it very clearly states your, your powers and control as the board of trustees as well. So I would say that that actually strengthens it all. It, it's, it supports what you guys are trying to do.
Okay. Yeah, that was going to be my only question is, it kind of takes out the alignment with CCSD that I'm trying to create.
That you were trying to put in.
And I don't, you know, I had actually just said the board of, you know, board of trustees and taken out superintendent, but CCSD and board of trustees was what I had put instead. But I, I, I wouldn't take that sentence out either.
Chairman, can I?
Or, Ms. Lieber?
So I, I just, I gotta still wrap my head around somebody who is donating something to help kids in philanthropy and the exclusion of students from the Charleston County School District, meaning that, I mean, I'm just going to give you my, you know, one of my, I'm a fan of this thing called the Exchange City where students can spend a day pretending to have a job and spending their money at another student's, whatever they're selling. And giving, denying that to the philanthropist who donated the money to achieve those results seems rather odd, like the charter schools are also public schools. Now, you'd have to give me some public-private, like where the dangers would, would be, why they would be excluded also.
Well, charter schools, we don't control.
No.
The, where the funding goes. So if, if it opened it up to charter schools, then we'd have the, the opportunity for it to then.
Yes.
Go to, you know, whatever, whatever a charter school wanted, maybe.
Right, but yet there still are children, Charleston County School District children, and something, an initiative might be something that benefits all of the schools of, all of the students of Charleston County. And there might be some students who, you know, there are some charter initiatives, as example, the Patterson's Academy, supporting their Summer Olympics might.
Right, but then people donate specifically to Patterson's. I think with this, this foundation, it's more all-encompassing and, and maybe the foundation does fund an amphitheater for all of Charleston County schools. That doesn't exclude other schools from being able to use the amphitheater, but it is funding directly to a Charleston County school initiative that's specifically Charleston County school.
Right.
At Patterson's or.
Right, but the, the charging, like it costs $10 to go to the amphitheater. The Charleston County Public Schools would get that free. The charter schools would therefore have to pay for it. And I don't know that the philanthropists who gave the money would have said, oh, no, 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 I only want it for this group of kids. I would think that they want to benefit all the kids. And I understand this arm is supposed to have a very successful philanthropy outreach because it's got, obviously, the ability to, to get the, the ear of the people, so.
Mr. Chair, may I make a point?
Ms. McKenney?
So this might make you feel better. If the philanthropist wanted a charter school to receive funds, they can give directly to the charter school. If they want to make a donation to the foundation, they can give directly to the foundation. So it's not, to me, denying a philanthropist the opportunity to support a charter school because they can give directly.
Yeah, however, but the streamlining of giving that money might be limited because maybe the charter school doesn't have the philanthropy arm set up that we do.
I, I can only say you could vote against the motion.
Right, and, and Mr. Parliamentarian, would I be out of line in making a friendly motion regarding this motion?
Amendment.
Amendment to the motion?
Pending amendment.
Right. Since we haven't voted on it, could I make a, a motion?
You can make a motion to amend the amendment.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend the amendment and that would be to reinstate the, through the solicitation of funds, partnerships, and coordinates with the goals and strategies and initiatives of the superintendent and board of trustees and to take out the green line that align with the school district's mission and vision as stated in the strategic plan. I think that's better stated, but I do agree with, and we would still include schools excluding charter and public and private partnership schools.
So just, just adding back that last sentence.
Right. It would, it would keep the language that was presented in the original.
Keep that red, the three red lines.
Yeah, the three red lines, I think, cover what your, what the original amendment was trying to correct with that align with the school district's mission and vision as stated in the strategic plan. I think the original language is, is, well, I don't have a second, so I'm not going, I haven't opened this up. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now I will open it up for debate. I'm sorry. I mean, I, I just think that the language that has been presented, it covers the same thing you're trying to do in the green above, and I think is actually stronger. But I do think the schools, you know, clarification as to who's actually covering the foundation. And in response to Ms. Lieber, I just think that this foundation is for public schools. And that's why we need this language tying this very clearly, that it is for public schools, so that people that are giving money know that it's going for public schools and we're not doing this broad, you know, area.
Well, it clarifies.
Ms. Dr. Temple?
Excuse me, Chair. It clarifies that this is for the schools that are direct, direct, directly operated by the school district. These other schools, we don't have control over them.
But could you read then what, how do you want to say it?
What I would do is I would leave in.
Please just read it from the beginning because Ms. Bailey and Mr. Hollingshead have to hear it.
The, the language would be to promote, promote educational and charitable endeavors, comma, one, the improvement and enrichment of quality of public schools excluding charter and public and private partnership schools in the school district, and two, the increase of community support for and involvement in the school district through the solicitation of funds and partnerships in accordance with the goals, strategies, and initiatives of the superintendent and the board of trustees.
Could, could we say the South, the Charleston County School District instead of superintendent?
Well, he's made an amendment to the amendment.
No, that's fine.
We'll just have to vote against him if you don't want it.
Can I ask the parliamentarian a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So is, so, because it's crucial on how my board, board members would vote, like this particular line, is there a way to like do a, a quick vote, a voice vote on a, just a comment to say, you know, is the removal of the superintendent an acceptable amend, you know, change? So the superintendent speaks on behalf of the district, so I, I understand the, the thinking there, but I don't, I think you want to be clear about with whom, as an ex officio member, the, the foundation board is working with, certainly at your discretion whether to amend, but I would caution that, whether I'm the superintendent or it's someone else. Well, that, that wasn't my point. My more was like, like a heat map of whether anyone was interested in that specific change. Not saying that that was the change, but, you know, like, like reckon the charter, it doesn't sound like my board members would support including charter schools in this, but there might be, you know, possibly some support. Like, is there like some sort of like, hey, can we get a heat map on how people feel about this? Okay, well, I, I lost that though.
Only during debate.
That was Mr. Grant to answer, Ms. Lieber.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
We need one word after endeavors, the word for, as you're going to say, to promote educational and charitable endeavors, for, one.
Number four.
We've just put here, four. No, take that out.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, that's correct. I agree.
I agree. And it gives stronger language.
I agree. To read correctly, it should be to promote, promote educational and charitable endeavors for that align with school district?
Yeah.
Then, one. Number five. Four. Number one, the improvement. The four needs to be here. Yep.
Put it in the wrong place.
It's good thing we have these cards, right?
Yeah, you did. You just wrote it there and I just wrote it here. It was already there, so I just left it.
It's there.
Did you have it? No, you need the word for. You need to scratch all of that. Four.
Ultimately, that's the same thing.
Got it.
So instead of primarily, we're putting in four.
Correct. Yeah, that's right.
If we have no further discussion, I would like to close the floor and bring the, the second motion up for vote.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
And to make this easier, I'm going to do it by voice vote. All in favor of the second motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any? Hearing none, the motion to amend Section 3.02a is passes.
We have B.
Do we have any further discussion regarding Article Three?
Yes, Section B.
Oh, I got two.
I move to attend, uh, to amend section 3.02B, specific purposes to insert the words and solicit after the grant. So it will read as follows, to take and hold by bequests, devise, gift, grant, and solicit funds, purchase, lease, or otherwise any property. And then the rest of it is, is just all the same. So if you flip the card, you'll see in green the words and solicit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, I will open it up for discussion.
I, I think you want to add and solicit funds. We have that.
It's what it says.
Yeah, but there isn't green. I mean, you're saying and solicit.
And solicit.
But there isn't the word funds in the sentence currently.
Right after solicit, it says funds. Look on the greenside, look on. The word was already there.
Oh, maybe I haven't.
Yeah, see here, yeah, so.
Are you saying in the original?
In the original document.
The original document.
In the original document, this is the original document. It says to take and hold, purchase, grant, purchase, grant, purchase, but no funds.
They added it in.
They had to add funds too.
We need green on funds.
Yeah, it just needs to be green.
We want a lot of money into this foundation.
Funds.
I think it's fine. Hearing no further discussions, I'd like to move on, uh, or accept that the, um, are we clear on the language? Ms. Trudy, you see that we're adding in the letters? Um, I'd like to close the motion for debate and bring it up for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? None against the motion or the amendment to, the language 3.02 passes.
No.
No. Oh, I, I just.
Mr. Chair.
Monsieur.
I had, um, a motion to talk about section 3.05. Um, it says in here, the board of directors will notify, that, one of the last sentences, the board of directors will notify in writing to the Charleston County School District Board of Trustees its purpose in amending or restating operating guidelines, plans, practices, procedures prior to doing so. I wanted to ask, uh, kind of the district and, and the foundation, what they meant by this and how the process would go. Cause the way that it reads, it kind of seems like it would, you'll make the amendment, you'll just notify us, but we don't necessarily as a board or, I shouldn't say we, whoever's on the board at the time.
And, and Mr. Parliamentarian, this is an interesting, always an interesting question when you do this. So when we have an article and a board member is not, um, has a question regarding an article and there's really not a motion pending, but there is some concern by the board member as to under, you know, clearly understanding the intent of it, what is the proper way to bring it up for discussion?
I, I, I think a question can be made as for informational purposes.
For informational purposes.
Yes, and I presume that would maybe be made of staff.
Is a question for informational purposes.
Yeah.
So all board members know, if you, if you're concerned about an issue, just say, I'd like to make a, you know, a question.
May I? So, uh, in Article 3.0, I'm going back to it because I was just scrolling down, um, 3.05, um, that means that anytime the, um, foundation board wishes to consider any of those kind of things, um, it will state its purpose to the board. And Art, in Article Eight, it goes on to say that the board of trustees shall approve, uh, any amendments to the bylaws, um, so the board of trustees has the final approval. So it's just, those, those sections tie each other together to ensure that there's clarity on that action.
It doesn't show any approval there, so I just wanted to.
Understood, absolutely. And that's, that's essentially, that's, that's specific to the discretionary power of the board of directors. And then Article Eight talks about the involvement of the board of trustees.
Okay.
If there's no further debate or amendments to Article Three, um, Article Three is perfected and Article Four is now before the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Dr. Temple.
Oh, that's Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Roberson.
Yes, um, the section 4.01.
The corporation shall receive funds by collection and receipt of contributions. The corporation shall not receive funds that influence whether the donor will be awarded a contract or business of any kind from the corporation or from the school district.
Second.
And then if you flip, you'll again see the additional language in green.
There's a motion and a second. I will open up the floor for any discussion on the proposed amendment. Ms. Lieber.
I think I, so I understand what you're trying to say. So let's just pretend that all of a sudden we get donations and then we, um, there's an opportunity for influence. Do you give back the fu, is there recourse? Do you give back the funds or do you, like, how does that happen? Go ahead.
So I don't know that I can answer that question directly, but I'd like to understand. So it's, it's actually common practice in the education foundation landscape that, uh, organizations who may have contracts with the district do in fact contribute to the foundation, but not as a condition of their business. The foundation is in no way, um, able to influence whether or not contracts are rewarded. And I want to make sure that you aren't inadvertently creating a restriction on vendors participating or supporting the foundation with this language. So I think it would be important to understand, is that your intent? And if so, uh, it is, it is a limiting factor that's not a best practice.
Yes, thank you. One thought that occurs to me is the many people that contribute to our gala, which funds the educational symposium for teachers. Those are people that, um, individuals or the district might do business with, but it's out of the generosity of their hearts that they, they give that money and.
Some of them are, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm, do, we really don't want to put on any restrictions. I think, Mr. Prentice, if we look at our procurement rules, um, policies that obviously, you know.
I mean, this.
Open bids are open bids.
It, it would be a, an ethics violation to allow someone to influence, um, you know, the award of a contract by, you know, correlation to donation of funds. And it would also be an issue in the procurement code. Um, so I, you know, I, of course, I mean, the, the intent of the language is absolutely, you know, spot on from the standpoint that, you know, we would never, um, want that to happen in any circumstance, but I don't want to discourage folks that do business with the district from, you know, being philanthropic to the foundation to support the efforts of the district and kind of closing that off. Um, I do think that, uh, the staff level, uh, developed conflict of interest waiver, um, is something that we could, uh, further expand, you know, whenever contributions are received, uh, to ensure that, you know, they understand the nature of the contribution, uh, doesn't prohibit them from doing business with the district, but that their contribution in no way, um, you know, is tied. Yeah. Um, I, I think it could be done as a, an operational element, um, because we want to respect and honor that at all levels. But, you know, I, I just, I would be somewhat cautious about bringing in the bylaws for that reason, that's all.
Well, I just want to say.
Ms. Bailey?
I, I just want to say, um, that should already be known that that would be a conflict of interest. And, um, yeah, we do a, a lot of business with different organizations across Charleston County. And I would hope and pray that, uh, w- we would not get donations or contributions based on contracts or anything of that nature, but that should be something that sh- shouldn't even be said. It's already known, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Roberson?
Thank you. So, Mr. Prentice, um, so I want to make sure that, uh, we were saying, that I understand what you're saying. So you would put that language in, um, in administrative rule of some sort or update the conflict of interest, um, statement because where I'm coming from is for district policy, um, KCD.
Correct. So I, I guess the, the notion of, um, it's policy, it's procurement code, it's law. When we receive donations, you know, it's incumbent upon us, just like when we have board members, to ensure that there's not conflict of interest. Um, and so, you know, essentially some type of notification of the receipt of funds, ensuring that there's a, you know, stated awareness that funds cannot be used to influence. And, you know, you could cite the Ethics Act, you could cite the procurement code or the policy, um, you know, in that kind of receding document, um, you know, which would be incumbent of a strong internal control.
Ms. McKenney?
Yes, if I may give you an example, for ex, for example, if I, um, make a contribution to an organization that's 501(c)(3), when I receive the acknowledgement, it's, I did not receive any blah, 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 blah for my contribution. Would it help to clarify this just a little bit so that we know that we're following, um, policy KCB? Like, insert the language here, that the corporation shall receive funds by collection and receipt of contributions following policy KCB? Would that help?
I think that the foundation shouldn't be following our policies. I mean, I think the foundation is going to be, you know, it generally is, they're going to be great with their own policies.
The, the board of directors will be required to adopt its own policies and procedures, you know, that, that would be a strong, you know, internal control that would be in place. And, you know, from a governance standpoint, you know, should that be a gap that's identified, you know, we would want to be held accountable, um, we collectively being the foundation and those that are overseeing its operations once it's fully established. Um, but, you know, again, I, I think that could be in their policies and procedures. And that policy or procedure on behalf of the foundation would then, you know, promulgate the form, um, you know, or the acknowledgement of sorts of the funds.
Right. Mr. Hollings said, do you have anything to say? Ms. Bailey? Hearing none, I would like to bring, close the, the debate and bring the motion up for vote. Can we do this by voice vote again? I'd like to do it by voice vote and move on.
Just the, the, the potential withdrawal of the motion on the table. I don't, before we brought it to vote, I wasn't sure if Ms. Roberson was interested in withdrawing it.
Withdraw the motion.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the motion's withdrawn. Any further motions regarding Article Four?
406.
406.
Yes.
Thank you. There you go. I was, I was passing her mind.
I'm going to give her index card. Mr. Johnson, I could share with you these. We love it.
I mean, the annual audit is definitely issues. Or, because the state, this Department of Education's going to, I'll explain it.
All right, moving along here. I move to amend section 4.05, um, annual audit to read as follows. The board of direct.
406.
Yeah, 406. I said five.
That's okay.
Okay, 406. Sorry about that. All right. The board of directors shall select a certified public accountant to audit the corporation's books and accounts and prepare a review of financial statements of the corporation in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. In a timely manner, the foundation will provide the school district and public a copy of the annual audit and any reports it is required to submit to the Secretary of State of South Carolina.
Second.
All right.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Temple?
Yeah, so if you flip the card, you'll see it's the last sentence that, um, we're suggesting be added.
So definitely supportive of this. Um, I'll explain why. Um, there's a lot of conversation here today where, you know, there's an underlying reason, uh, that this would already happen and the language further clarifies that and we support it. Uh, in this case, um, the generally accepted accounting principles that are referenced and then the governmental accounting standards board, uh, would classify this entity as a component unit of CCSD because of the governance and oversight of the board. Uh, there's a checklist that they develop where we have to determine that any entity such as charter schools, um, or other, you know, creatures of the school district that are created, um, will fall to that component unit classification. And in this case, it would. Um, and as a result, that means that this entity would have to complete its audit for inclusion in the school district's annual audit prior to the time prescribed by the Department of Education, which is five months after the close of the fiscal year. So we have to submit our audit to the State Department, uh, by December 1st of each year. And as a result of that component unit designation, the foundation would be required to complete its audit, provide it to us, we would roll it up in our financials and then submit the whole package, uh, both to the board and the State Department. So this, uh, just further clarifies what we would already be doing and, and we're supportive of that language.
Any other discussion?
I guess.
Chairman.
Ms. Lieber?
I guess just, I mean, define exactly timely. I mean, I know he needs that information to roll it up, but that, the, um, the budget is provided, what, April, May, which is four months after. So what is timely in the definition of this?
Our staff attorney has, uh, indicated one potential change to the green text. Um, instead of using the word foundation, uh, she recommends using the word corporation, which would be consistent with the language throughout the rest of the section. Uh, so it would be in a timely manner, the corporation will provide the school district and public a copy. And that way it follows the capitalized terms, uh, in the definitions. Good catch.
Well, I don't know, I would think that timely, I would think that timely just means that we're, you know, um, trying to get it done as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hearing no further discussion, I'd like to bring the motion up for vote. Yes, with the insertion of corporation for foundation. Do it by voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion to amend Article Four is passed. Any further motions or discussions regarding Article Four? Seeing none, Article Four is perfected and Article Five is now before the board. Are there any motions or questions of information? Are there any motions or questions of information?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Roberson?
Section five oh two.
Section five oh two. Dr. Temple, would you like to make a question?
Yes. I move to amend section five point zero two, number tenure and qualifications to read as follows. For simplicity, if we flip to the back, we're just changing the word six to, I mean, the changing the word five to six because we added a teacher.
Because.
Well, you do, well, they just, we'll make the motion and do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Roberson, okay. Dr. Temple, would you like to explain the reason for the amendment?
Yes, because the number of direct, the.
Dr. Temple, if you, if you would like for me to interject here, we, we concur.
True.
It was changed everywhere else. We picked up the teacher and so there's six ex officio, so this would just align the language consistently.
Correction.
Yeah.
Concur.
That was adding the teacher.
Right. So it's just bringing everything in alignment.
Correct.
Any further discussion?
Several references to that.
I did in that section. Actually, this was more of a question again.
A question of information?
Yeah, for section five oh two.
Regarding this number or something else?
Same, same section, different part of the section.
But is it regarding this amendment or something else?
No.
Then I'd like to close the floor for discussion and bring the motion to amend up for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Ms. Jewett, do you have a question of information regarding this article?
This section talks about the two different phases. And in phase one, trustees appoint the directors. But then in, after that phase, I'm wondering if there should be any wording of clarification for how the next ones get appointed because it seems like the next appointees do not get even any sort of Board of Trustees approval.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman? Ms. Jewett, we, we can offer some language.
Okay.
And the next one.
Are you, are you?
Yeah.
But I, I'd like staff to respond first.
So that, correct, phase one, as it's written, would be the nine members appointed by the board, the six ex officio, and then phase two would be nine members appointed within the board of directors, one each representing each council district established to align with the districts of the board of trustees and then expanding up to thirty-five members in total, you know, to represent a full, a full board if it was the desire of the board to go that large.
Are there any amendments regarding Article Five?
No. Well, so I understand they all represent the districts in the next phase, but the, it doesn't actually, they don't then get vetted by the board of trustees after that.
Correct.
And the board of trustees has no, no authority.
So that, that's part of that kind of segmentation of the, you know, independence of the organization as it's getting up on its feet. And in this sense, that second phase of operations would, you know, be kind of the, the final establishment of the organization. The board would stop control over amendments to the bylaws, you know, and the overall decision if they, you know, didn't want the organization to continue to exist. But there would no longer be board, you know, deliberated appointments to the board of directors.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't the board of trustees have some sort of, even like authority to remove if, if it, it, it's contradicting?
Ms. Callahan.
And not aligning with policy?
Yeah, so I can speak to best practice. So for it to be an autonomous, independent organization per the five oh one(c)(3) rulings by the R S, it's board members who select the following board. And so I think the, the, the thing that you're really looking to create, if you think about what's the intention of this organization, it's to create a strong fundraising organization that's well-connected in the community. The intention would be to have a governance committee and the governance committee would have a board matrix. The board matrix would identify the skills and the talents and the connections that are needed to form a strong governing board. And then the governance committee would work to find those people in the community. And so it would be a diverse and well-qualified board, looking at your bylaws. You do have, I think, some really important safety precautions, as in the school board ultimately could dissolve this foundation if you thought they were headed in a, in a different direction. But there's a really important kind of fundamental point that I, I think we want to capture here, which is that you want this organization to be owned by the community. You want the community to feel a sense of, of ownership over this philanthropy. The greatest thing you can aspire to in a community is to create a culture of philanthropy in which the entire community feels ownership for the community's children. They don't think it's up to the school district to educate their children. They think it's up to the entire community to support them. One of the ways that you do that is by creating this strong, community-owned philanthropic arm in which people come to the table and are able to fully participate. If everyone is appointed by the school district or by the school board or through the school board, there's a sense that this is just the school district's organization and that's what we, we want it to feel like it's community-owned.
So I'm not saying everybody, I'm saying those, those specific roles. And, I mean, I, in, if everything was flowers and rainbows, we, we wouldn't be in the world we're in today. But it's not all flowers and rainbows always. And so the reason we have the bylaws is to make sure that if it's not flowers and rainbows, there's a way for an organization that was voted in, fully voted in by the public to help make sure that it's still guided in the right way.
Yeah.
So I understand. And in a, in a perfect world, I think that it's, it sounds great. And sometimes it works, absolutely. But I don't know that you can just go on the whim of the community wanting to own it. The community does own it by us helping them because technically we are voted in by the community. So that's why we're here today is to make sure that we're representing the community.
Right.
I understand that, but we do have to speak to, this organization does need to feel as though it is free of political influence and it is owned by the community and this ensures that. And we put in other safety mechanisms and frankly, having the ex officio board members ever present for this does that for us moving forward.
I have a question for information regarding five oh two. And it really goes to the question of term limits. Because we have the. I mean, I'm just, I'm just, because as I read these, the, the bylaws, that wasn't, I mean, it seems like it's not addressed. And I'm kind of curious why. Because it would seem that like, I've just seen too many boards that it seems like you've got certain members that are on for twenty years. And why, I don't know, you know, in the first place, especially when they're not getting paid. But nevertheless, I, I would think you would want to push for a refresh at some point. And, and I agree with some of the comments regarding the staggered side of it so that you don't end up with a whole fresh new board every, you know, period, whether it's four or two, you know, and I would assume you would want to come in for at least four years.
I think the idea was that we were going to start with language that was less restrictive, but it's definitely worthy of a conversation. And, and it's a, and it is a wonderful point to talk about making sure we have fresh ideas and motivated people that continue to serve and, you know, don't become stagnant.
No, not yet. Um, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Roberson?
Thank you. We forgot to give another word. It wasn't highlighted in green, so forgive us. Back in section five oh two, we would like to add the word annually to the conflict of interest, the conflict of interest affidavit annually.
We had it bolded.
We had it bolded. Yeah. We, we read it.
We read it.
But we did not put it in our motion. We only had the number, the numeral six in our motion and we should have had the word annually as well.
So I think, I think, Mr. Parliamentarian, that we just would take a simple motion to amend and add the word.
As I understand, second five point oh two, to add the word annually, be required annually to sign a conflict of interest affidavit.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, bring the motion up for vote. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Would you please read the motion? That's Leah.
Oh, Leah. Ms. Watley?
Yes, would you please read the motion?
All voting members shall be required to sign a conflict of interest affidavit annually. Such affidavit is subject to staff review. The word annually being added to that sentence.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? And I would ask you to be brought up for vote.
To five oh, five oh two one.
We have to get this one voted on first.
Okay, sorry.
There you go.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none, the amendment passes. The word is added.
Yeah, we, if we move on to five oh two one.
Five oh two one.
Embrace some of the conversation you've just had about terms.
Dr. Temple, you want to make the motion?
Let, pass out the cards. Dr. Temple, pull your microphone down so those will like. Just don't want to hear them hearing me grunting or.
You're that small.
It's somebody good to say that.
Eyes are deceiving. I know, this is really small. Too many cars on that one, man.
How old are you when you?
Put your glasses on.
My eyes are broken.
All right, just as like an orientation to this part, this is in, in here, we're trying to suggest that the terms of the board.
Well, let's just, let's just make the motion that you can explain.
Okay, staggered. All right, here we go. I move to amend section five zero two, number tenure and qualifications. Paragraph labeled five point zero two one reads as follows. The initial voting members of the directors of the corporation shall be appointed by majority vote of the board of directors of the district. Phase one.
Board of Directors or just?
Board of Trustees. I'm sorry. Board of Trustees of the district. In phase one, the initial voting members of, of directors of the corporation appointed by the board of trustees of the district shall consist of a resident of each of the nine election districts of Charleston County, who is also not an employee or a member of the board of trustees. Such member so appointed shall serve until the last day of his or her residency in the respective attendance area of the school district or until the date, which is three years after his or her appointment by the board of trustees, whichever first occurs, and until a successor is appointed. Those individuals shall serve three years from the date of their appointments. Upon the conclusion of the initial terms of service of the directors of the corporation or three years from the date of their appointments, whichever occurs sooner, the directors of the corporation shall appoint their successors. In order to maintain institutional knowledge, the board shall implement a system of staggered terms for all directors.
It still doesn't fly mine.
Second?
Second.
Dr. Temple, would you like to explain your reason for the amendment?
Yeah, this, this basically is the part where the, the board of directors reflect the nine districts that we all represent. This also has members of the board of directors serving for three years. Thinking here is that two years seems to be a short amount of time to get up to speed and so the carryover for three years would be good. I know on a personal basis, the first couple of years on this board, you're learning, you're doing, the third year, I think, is when we're really able to perform. And then also because of the nine of us are from single-member districts, we were all elected in staggered terms. So that would, that would reflect the nature of the nine members of a board representing the community, that we also would, this board of directors would have staggered terms.
Is there any discussion regarding the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lieber?
I guess the question is, the staggered, how do you identify that? Because you've already got, at the beginning, you start with three years. I mean, is somebody supposed to serve two years and then you replace him for three? How does this work?
All right, the way it worked when we, when we were all, when we started, and this was, this was by law, the people for districts two, four, six, and eight each served two years and then they were re-elected for their four-year term. So if we follow the same pattern, directors for this board, two, four, six, and eight would serve two years and then, and then the odd would serve three and then they would be reappointed or new appointees for two, four, six, and eight would then serve three years. And that would, that's how this, that's how this board worked. Two, four, six, and eight served two years. Those of us in even odd numbers serve the four, so we're just changing it to the three years.
I'm just going to look at the language. I don't think the language says what you're trying to achieve.
Oh, yeah, it does. It's, or two years of the date of appointment, whichever occurs sooner.
I, I see all the two years scratched out on this.
Because we were making it three years. They're three-year terms.
Mr. Chairman, we, Dr. Temple, thank you so much for all the advance work you and Ms. Roberson have, have put into this and the thoughtfulness. I would like, we spent some time working with Ms. Callahan on, specifically on this. If we, if staff could respond, Ms. Callahan?
Yes, so, so the point I, I think you made, actually, Dr. Temple, which is in your third year, you were finally up to speed and feeling really effective. And so one of the cautionary tales is you might lose a good board member right at the point at which they're operating at maximum effectiveness and maybe have taken on chair of a committee. And what I would like to suggest is, is that industry standard is two, three-year terms. And so it doesn't mean that at three years, you don't pause and reflect and give someone the opportunity to say, will I commit again to these responsibilities? Or for the governance chair to say, we don't actually want you to continue for a second three-year term. So it does create a natural breakpoint where both the board member and the. and the governance committee can reflect on their contribution to the board. But if the governance committee chooses to put them forward for a three-year term, and they in fact want to serve for a second three-year term, that's usually where maximum productivity connectivity happens. And so I would recommend at a minimum offering people two three-year terms. There's other ways to word this, potentially a requirement then that they take a year off and could continue for a third three-year term. But definitely one three-year term, I think, would not serve the organization in the way that you would hope.
Talked about that second one.
Okay.
It's a break.
The mandatory break, yeah. I was just commenting that the seven-year itch is actually real, and there does become an organizational, kind of a life cycle for people's volunteering, which of course, this is an all-volunteer organization, where people are tired, and especially if they've been contributing wholeheartedly, they might be ready for a break at that seven-year.
We did have some language to try to address this. And we wanted people to be eligible for a second three-year term, at which point, if they had already served their two three-year terms, they could take off at least a year hiatus before coming back on the board. So that could be language we could work. That's where this would be worked into. Anything about the terms of office would be in here.
I would personally be fine with two three-year terms back to back. I don't know about the break thing, I mean, or a mandatory break. I just don't know if that's necessary personally.
After they serve two three-year terms, that's when they would take a break.
After.
Then come back on the board.
That's fine, but after the first three years, you would just continue.
Not, and not naturally.
If you wanted to, or if it was.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a mutual. I mean, I do think it does provide the governance committee with a face-saving out for people who are maybe not stepping up and contributing in the way that we would hope that they would. So it should be a mutual agreement that they move forward with a second three-year term.
Just maybe that staggering says, like, the first term of the nine members, the four of them receive a two-year term, the next receive a three-year term, and it's not a complete stagger, but it's like, oh, you got that two years gets relieved and then three, so it's stair-step just a little bit.
I'm sorry, this is like something I love, which is, so I can't help myself. You also will be bringing on other board members in addition to these nine, and life circumstances happen. People have to leave the board after one year, even though they'd like to be on for three. They move, things happen. So I have noticed there's a natural staggering that occurs in the board members who are added by the governance committee and not appointed by your group. So I would just expect some natural attrition to happen. And some people will stay for six and some people will stay for one. So I don't think we have to worry about losing everybody at the same time. I do think the two-year and three-year would be useful. Or your point, half of them on for two, the other half on for three could be useful.
Can I make another comment? Is there a way, is there an out? Like a unanimous out for a board member who maybe doesn't deliver? Or like, how does, I'm sorry if that's in the bylaws somewhere.
It is there, yeah. We'll find it and tell you. Yeah, I saw it. It's that they can be voted off the board. And it's in removal from the board.
Right.
5.08.
Yeah.
Could we just, could we just add the language like about the staggered terms following the law that put us together for this? I'm thinking the law that put us together for the single-member districts. That law put us into the staggering system that we use, and it would be helpful to just follow that staggering system. Mr. Johnson, can you?
And then the other part.
Ms. Roberson.
That the law that created this board to be single-member districts laid out that process that I described. I'm sorry, I didn't get the law.
As I understand, we're really just talking about this initial board. And at this point, what you're now looking at is that the Board of Directors will be appointing the next board.
Right.
So, which is really what the crux of it is, because the initial board gets the foundation up and running, and then it is, by the way, the bylaws are written up with the understanding that the Board of Directors wants it's up. So this period of extending it, I can see extending it to three years. But I think at that point, you know, and we'll talk about other issues, at that point, the foundation should be up and running, and it's going to be up to the directors as to who's, you know, put on the.
Correct. I think we are just.
Board. We're not involved anymore.
We're just getting some standards and language. And then if we have it in our bylaws, then they could determine what the staggering, what it would look like. We don't have to go that deep into it, but we need to.
But that's, that's why I bring it back to it. I don't think the staggering is really applicable to this. This is really just getting the foundation for these nine members. I think the staggering that we may be looking at will be coming from the other seven members, or I guess it's not seven members, it's six members that will be coming on, because it's 15 members total.
Okay, Ms. Arthur, Ms. Robin, Ms. Callahan.
I answer to all of it.
Yeah. Let's just revisit what you said, because we are open to that language, the two, three-year terms. How do we incorporate that? Where do you see that we need to add that part into the language that we are presenting?
So what I see is that you have phase one and then phase two. And so I think it has to do with your intention. I heard some other comments about will you have term limits? And so if you're looking for term limits for all of the board and not just the appointees, then I think incorporating it in a different section, and I would defer to legal counsel here for where that might go. If you're just looking for term limits for the initial appointees, then putting it in 502.1 would make sense.
And if I may, I just think that by saying that you will serve three years and that's it, then the director's point, it's already in place, and your staggered will come in with, and I agree, finding that there should be a limit, a term limit of some period, whether it's seven years or, you know, two terms or three terms, whatever, how it's looking at. I think we do have to put that language in as it applies to all directors. And then if you look at the way that works, then that initial six that comes in, you know, they're in for a certain period of time, longer than three years. And then you've got your natural staggering on those next nine.
Well, do you want to add something like?
I think it's.
Are eligible for a second three-year term, at which point they must take at least one year hiatus.
And you're only directing that to the nine?
Yes.
To the nine.
Only the first nine and not the following or?
Right.
Basically.
Right.
Not the subsequent?
It's the nine. Well, oh, yeah, because after the nine, we could get to.
Then someone could get in there and hang out for ever.
Well, if, then it would apply, that would apply to, okay, so the first nine are, let me think through this. The first nine are, the first nine are appointed, and then the foundation decides they can increase up to that 35 number. So if they added two more directors in that first, you know, in that first period, then those new directors are all subject to the three-year term with the same terms, same terms.
So continuing phase two with same terms.
Can I also point, if, just pretend all of the members did their two, three terms, and then they had to take a year hiatus, you're left with a blank. And then even if somebody, if it was, I just don't see how a person refills that seat on the seventh year because there's not the opening, or how come you don't gut?
If they took, if they took, they served their two terms, and then they took a hiatus, then this, because we're now in the second phase, the Board of Directors could say, you know, we really loved having you on. You took a break, we come back on. So then they can come back on.
I really think we're going in circles on this one. And I think the original language is fine, because the intent on that is just for that original nine. I think what we need to do is to consider it in a later article, or probably in this article, is a motion, I mean, is an amendment to add in a term limits. Yeah, and just leave it at this, because this is the initial nine to get them going. And then the directors, I don't want to limit anybody here from running for the next, you know, or, you know, say they turn out to be great, Board of Director says you're great, and they're going to offer them or put them up for a vote to the directors. So I think it's more important that we set the term limits than, you know, get into the weeds on the initial nine.
So I would defer to counsel, but adding another article, so 5.12 at the bottom, referring to limits might be a reasonable way. And then it would refer to all directors.
Yes.
Correct.
Could limits go into 022?
No.
Add a 5.12.
5.12.
At the end.
At the very end, ahead of officers.
Be a new section in Article 5, 5.12.
Following 5.12.
Term limits.
Correct. Adding a section for term limits.
Yeah.
And then with your recommendation then?
But do you still want it to change to three years instead of two years? In the section?
Yeah.
5.0.
Yeah, I think that's fine for the initial, I agree, I think three years is good for the initial nine. So Dr. Temple, would you like to amend your motion?
Do we declare, are we going to leave in all of the green language? Have we put in the staggered terms of three years? There wasn't much change here other than three years, three years.
I just think the last sentence, I don't think we need. Yeah, take the staggered out. In order to maintain institution, I think we just take the stagger and then we'll move on. And the only thing we'll do is change, or what I recommend would be the three.
Change any reference to.
I mean, Mr. Hollingshead.
Yes, sir.
Were you saying something?
I think you covered it. I just wish that a lot of this could have been worked out before this meeting. I believe the the spirit of what Dr. Temple is saying is great. I would love to see representatives come from each district within our community. But I think we need to have a basic template of what the next Board of Directors or the nonprofit can work off of. And term limits are great, but I just think we just need to have like a framework for them to come backwards, that's all.
Yeah, there's no.
Ms. Watley.
In the language on 5.021, was that the initial recommended language? Or is that something that we inserted about the nine initial governing coming from the nine districts and the, through the county, the representative districts? Did we include that, or was that?
Original.
That's original language? Okay.
Original language, yes.
Everything, Leah, everything in black on the back of the card.
I don't have any of the cards.
Oh, she doesn't have the card.
She's down.
Oh, okay. So, Ms. McKinnon.
She handed me one.
So everything that's in black is the original.
Okay.
And then in red was what we suggest crossing out. And then green is what we.
That's what you're proposing?
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, where are we?
Ms. Roberson.
Where are we now? You asked Dr. Temple to make a motion.
We have a motion, which is the language you had read. What I'm asking is for a friendly motion to amend to keep the language as written in section 5.02, with the exception of changing the date which the two, three years rather than two years, and that would require three amendments. It's referred to, the two's referred to three times, so it'd be three changes. Everything that says two would be changed to three years, and leave it at that. And remember, yeah, well, the last one wouldn't be included. We're just keeping the original language as proposed in 5.02, and all we're doing is changing, you know, the term limits from two years to three years.
Mr. Provalsky, I just want to ask one more question about that same point. I love the idea of having the initial governing having represented from each district. My concern with that is that, is that going to be too restrictive? Are we going to be able to find qualified people?
I should hope so. I would hope so, in each district.
I mean, I would think so, but this is, I don't have experience in foundations like this. So I'm going to defer to the experts.
I don't believe that will be a problem at all.
Okay, good.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Then we just have discussion.
For the three years.
Oh, yeah, but I have something else in the original language.
Oh.
Could we consider, I would like to take out the unless compelling reasons justify an alternative appointment method out of that.
So you want to keep that?
Take that out.
Strike that out?
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Is there a reason for that language?
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, I think that ensures that there is one member representing each district. Regardless, there's no ambiguity to it whatsoever. No compelling reason would change that, so we're good with that.
I think I'm picking up on the same concern about the conflict of interests you're talking about with a board member serving.
This would just be that in phase two, when the Board of Directors of the Foundation appoints its board, that one member for each of the original nine seats would have to live in each of the nine council districts the trustees are elected in, so that there was essentially a liaison relationship between trustee and that council district. And the language that's being removed is just unless compelling reasons justify an alternative appointment methodology. This would mean there is no alternative appointment methodology. Each of the nine members would have to represent one of the nine council districts. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good to know.
I agree with that. So the motion, Ms. Trudy, would be 5.02, 5.02 would be amended with the language unless compelling reasons justify an alternative appointment methodology will be stricken, and all terms will be three rather than two.
Do I have a second? And we have no further discussion. I'd like to close it and bring it up for vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion to amend 5.02 is passed. Do you have any further amendments to five? Or do we want to take up the tenure issue?
2.2.
Okay.
Got it. Mm hmm. Yep.
Much, thank you.
All right, I move to amend section five point zero, two, number tenure and qualifications. The third paragraph labeled five point zero, two, two, to read as follows. In phase two, the voting members of the directors of the corporation shall be appointed by the members of the directors of the corporation. The board of directors shall determine the number and qualifications of appointees. But nine of the members who have been approved by the board of trustees shall be residents of each of the nine. Election districts of Charleston County and also not an employee or member of the board of trustees. And then flip it over and you'll see the words that were removed and then the words in green are added.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll bring it up for vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
We, we don't, we, we have some comments on this, if there's a desire of the board to hear.
There is.
But. No.
A little too late.
Mr. Parham, Chair, can I allow him to?
They think you pulled the gun pretty quickly there, Mr. Chairman.
But now.
We move to.
Need to speak quicker.
Can we move to reconsider?
Certainly you could.
Just listen.
Okay, I move to reconsider.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Vote on reconsideration.
Motion reconsider passes.
There's still a pending motion.
So there's a pending motion.
So this, this is really what we were just discussing with respect to the notion of how the, um, the board is appointed following the first phase. Um, I think the, the very, going from the very bottom, of course, the, unless compelling reasons justify, that all, you know, can remain stricken as proposed. Um, but we did want to comment on the notion of the, the phase two directors being appointed. By the board of trustees versus being appointed by the board of directors of the corporation. And I think that's some of what we touched on earlier, but I don't know, Mr. Arnold, Ms. Callahan wanted to speak further to that.
Yes, both in, uh, our concerns for it being an independent organization, uh, as defined. And also that we are making sure that we are showing that this organization is free of political influence and. Governed by the community that's getting involved, it kind of goes against that spirit.
Any discussion with the new enlightenment?
Very strongly recommending that the phase two board be board appointed by, I mean, you, you also.
So, so really quickly, the wording says, um, that they would be appointed by the members. And then approved by the board, so not appointed by the board of trustees. They're being approved.
It's really the same.
It's, it's essentially the same, and you, you may discourage the participation of really good board members. Because they don't want to get involved in the politics of the actual school board of trustees. They want to see this as, this is running their own organization that is, uh, philanthropic and raising funds. And not, not get influenced in that way.
So. Hmm.
I just.
Am I missing?
The thing is that in phase two, the board of trustees doesn't, we don't appoint anybody. Um, starts to take the foundation further away from the, the district. Seems like it takes it further away from the district and the board. So adding the green part, who've been approved, at least we're, we're still. In, involved and hoping that it's, the foundation is meet, meeting the mission and vision, which, which. People in the community do want to know that, that we're, that we are engaged. That we're still focused on the mission and vision and strategic plans of the district. And so taking us away from it by phase two is, it just doesn't feel right to me. It doesn't feel like we're, we're elected by the community. I think our community expects us to have, um.
Dr. Temple.
Some, some involvement.
If, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Gobowski, I think the sentiment that I'm hearing from Dr. Temple and Ms. Stewart is, um, concern over the accountability. Um, I think there's a, 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 a concern that, once we create and then we hand it off. About how, how do we then, um, make sure that, and we've discussed this privately, but how do we then ensure accountability? That the foundation is being run well, especially if you get somebody in there that perhaps has nefarious reasons or isn't highly functional or something like that? Is there a way that we can address that?
So, uh, there's a number, Ms. Callahan, would you like to speak on that specifically? And I'm happy to add some local context as well, but I wanted to talk to best practice.
Sure, so, I, I think you're still thinking about a board that could have potentially thirty-five people. And you're looking to approve nine, right? Is that right, nine? So.
Just the nine.
So it would be the nine. So in terms of material influence, I think it would still be a community held board. Um, if it were, if it were nine board members and they all were approved. I think the political influence or the concern that there could be political influence would remain. I, I do think at many times throughout the bylaws, you see how you're influencing the, the organization or how you're. How you're ensuring that it is in compliance with your mission and vision and. And strategies and goals and objectives, and you have five, I think, very influential ex officios, six. Who will be there at the table and influencing it, and, and I would say in my experience, while those people may not have a vote, their voice is so large that they actually don't need a vote. They're very influential folks. So is this necessary? I don't think so, but am I concerned that nine out of thirty-five will create undue influence? No.
Ms. Sliber.
I just have a comment to that, I mean, as we are nine political members, I don't agree necessarily that. Other appointees wouldn't have a political agenda. Um, because it's just the nature of a, of a human, so I don't.
I.
Hey, can I just, I, I, because after reading this and, and listening to it. So now, as looking at this fresh set of eyes of information. If I make an appointment, what you're asking me is that the board has to approve my appointment. That's what I think the language.
That's the way it's written, um, and I, I think I understand both sides of the argument. Um, I, I'm gonna give an example here, and I think this is where the political influence comment really comes into play. If we had nine members appointed by the board of trustees via either direct appointment or approval of the full board, plus the, the non-voting ex officios, of course. It could create somewhat of a power struggle where the board of directors itself wants to, you know. Begin to appoint additional members to create a tilt of power, um, in theory, to ensure that, you know, the direction of the, the, um, foundation moves a certain way. If there was a certain number of appointees directly by the board. Um, and I think the board's power in phase two is really intended to be as it's described in the bylaws, um, and, you know. You start to create a, a political entity where you really just want the board to do their job and carrying out the mission of the foundation. Um, and I would hate to see nine members appointed by the board of trustees, and then the board of directors saying, let's add five or six more of our own. Because we can go up to thirty-five to create a majority that, you know, leans a certain way. Uh, that just worries me, to be totally transparent.
They're not appointed by us.
But they are approved, so if, if the board.
I, I, if I'm approving someone that somebody else appoints, it, it has nothing to do with the person. I, it's not necessarily the person that I appointed. I mean, let's say you're, you're on the other board and you, phase two, I appointed you. And you decided to appoint whoever over there. I'm just vetting as a representative that, that I agree that the person that you in phase two. Have named as the new person is a good fit.
So if I can.
As well.
This is what, thank you, this is what I think I hear you saying. Okay.
It's, it's not about power, it's about a, accountability. It's about making sure that as we continue, as it continues, there's still a certain level of.
I was.
Just a touching point where this other board doesn't go completely separate from where we are. Because, you know, yes, it says that there's two board members and the superintendent, but, or we could. Take all this away and then make sure that two board members and the superintendent are not ex officios, we're actually voting members. So that then there is, there's got to be some way where there's continuous alignment, continuous accountability. It is not about power. We are not going to be in these seats forever. This is about, this is about what the future looks like and making sure that they run like this. And the two boards communicate with each other.
If. Are you? As well. When I hear, which I hear you saying reminds me, and unfortunately you weren't a part of this process when we hired the superintendent. Who, you know, that's what the board has control over, is hiring the superintendent. And then from there, the superintendent assembled the cabinet as well as the, the organizational chart and everything else. And, and what they do is they then vet candidates who apply for these different positions. And all we're handed is the one that they, they land on, that's kind of, I think, I hear you saying. Um. I mean, it definitely comes down to getting that initial nine solid, you know, we've, we've managed to turn the district around. By getting the right superintendent who's then appointed and chose through a vetting process, a really solid cabinet. Who's then like reformed the organizational chart and everything. Uh, that's kind of like what I think, um, what I, you know, with what you're saying, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know, I, I, I'm just going to leave that with that, I think you, you see where I'm going with that when I'm saying, um. I, I don't know how to, to wrap that up, but, um.
Okay, where, where are we again?
Yeah, I.
We have a motion, we have discussion. There's no.
Yeah. So if, if there's no introduced amendment in the vote, could of course be taken, um, to the, you know, what's been the motion that's on the floor. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to provide feedback, we just wanted to make sure that the position of staff and the recommendation, uh, with respect to the, the area was clear.
So, so the motion that's, that's up is the one with Dr. Temple's changes, which is, um, in line with what Ms. Stewart was saying, wanting to have more. Um, authority, I guess, and phase two.
I'm not so sure it's authority, I think it's more of being part of the vetting process, yeah.
I think we like it, liken it to the health advisory committee.
Right.
Or audit finance.
Audit finance.
Yeah, it's, it's much more, um, akin to, well, the changes, I guess, that, that you're proposing would be more like hack. But the, the way that the original language is written, the way the original language is just written is more like, um, the hiring of the superintendent. Who then assembles the, the district staff.
Yeah.
And, and audit and finance.
This is the future, like, it's.
Yeah, I understand that.
It's like round, phase two, round.
No, I, I understand that.
And in supportive staff's position, I, I can kind of see the problem I'm having with this now. Um, in the initial appointment, when we make our appointments, it's not like I'm bringing him up to the board and asking the board to vet my appointment. And so the, the restriction here is that this board, who makes the decision on who's going to be on the board. The only real restriction is they have to be in one of the nine districts. And so what is being asked by this motion is that the trustees would be part of that vetting process. It's that simple.
I think the, the only difference. Oh, I'm sorry.
And I, I think that comes down to, and I'll leave it for the best practices, is that an overstate, an overreach by this board?
Yes, and I guess our example is the health advisory, the health advisory committee. Um, the applications come in, um, and then we review them and we just vote on them. It's just a formality. Um, the staff has already vetted them and everything, so this, this kind of follows that same structure.
You want to?
Yes, I, I think it would just be important that when somebody comes forward, so you're looking for a diverse, a diverse group of people. And we can expect and hope that these people are diverse in age and gender and all of the political views and all the ways that make a good diverse board. And I think it would be important, and Mr. Arnold brought this up earlier, that it's not, it doesn't create a point of vulnerability when someone comes forward and now their name is. And, and, and you're talking about them in a public live stream forum, right? Does it keep people from wanting to serve on the board because now they need to be approved and discussed publicly by you all?
Actually, those are usually done in executive session and we, we say candidate A.
That'd be perfect, I think that's an important consideration, because I, I do see people feeling if this would be political in any way, they might not want to be a part of it.
In public. It would be done in executive session.
Yeah, then I, I, I wouldn't have as much concern about that, I, I think this was the big, the, the concern.
And I, I mean, Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna ask you on this one. When we look at audit and finance and, I mean, that's public. Um, I guess the health and welfare is not public, that is done in an executive session. But is there something in our bylaws or policy that says that it's done, or is it just? You know, policy because it is a contract, oh, it's not a contractual matter, but it is a, um. I'm just trying to think why we, on the health advisory, we bring it into executive session, but on the audit and finance, we don't. I'm trying to think what the two distinguishing factors, and I'm just concerned that, you know, with this, without saying that. And I don't want to gummy up the bylaws by saying that this would be done by our board in executive session, I mean, that seems kind of non-transparent, but.
I, offhand, I don't recall.
Yeah, I don't.
Any language or anything in the, uh, policy regarding health that requires it.
I mean, it's how we do it.
I mean, I think you, you obviously have adopted that practice, but I don't think I, I'm aware of anything that requires it. To be done in executive session.
May I recommend that if you're going to pass this, you add the language after the, uh. Who have been approved by the board of trustees in executive session. Shall be residents of each, that way we can make sure that it is codified, that they are protected from.
Yeah, that takes the political side out of it.
Yeah.
Are we?
FOIA controls.
All in agreement on that?
I, I, Mr. Gobowski, I would suggest that we make sure with, between, uh, the parliamentarian procedurally and council. That you all can dictate that, if, um, FOIA dictates what can be done in executive session and not, so. Um, I would just suggest that, that these two folks confer and make sure that before you adopt something of that nature.
As a, as a public body, as a public body, you're constrained by FOIA. You cannot adopt a policy, a set of bylaws, anything else that violates, as we went over in the retreat. Priority of rules, first priority is state law, FOIA is state law, you're a public body. FOIA says when you can convene an ex, executive session, so you can't by bylaws say, but we're going to do this in executive session, even though. FOIA doesn't approve it or authorize it or allow it. No, you're, you're in FOIA if you're a public body taking a vote.
And, and that's going to be another issue of discussion, you know, the FOIA provisions, so. Uh, I, I see what the parliamentarian is saying, and I would hate to get into, so.
Yeah.
So what does FOIA say on the, on something like this?
No.
Executive session on this item, or this arguable item, would be. Thirty dash four dash seventy subsection A, subsection one of that section. Discussion of.
subsection one of that section, discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body. This is not a public body. I, I keep that handy because I got to look at it every time I go to a county council meeting. And I didn't want to misquote it. It doesn't fall under any exception I'm aware of. Pardon me?
So are we currently violating FOIA?
Would if we put it in the bylaws.
No, when we discuss other.
State law provides for that appointment, okay? The last, only one I was a part of was the student. And state law provides that you appoint that person, so therefore it was a person over which you had authority of appointment. I, I think the difference is we are a public body. The foundation is not a public body. So that's the difference, why we're not violating FOIA. But if we put this in the bylaws, it would be, you know, a reference, it would be a violation.
Concern. The concern is approved by the Board of Trustees. Is that where we hung up?
Yes.
Well, why don't we just make the two ex officios and the superintendent voting members? So that at least two people can continue the.
We're jumping, we're jumping ahead. We, we've got to get this motion and.
So, so Mr. Gobowski, can, can, do you mind if the CFO weighs in one more time on this item? Just to make sure you understand some of the concerns about which we, we have in regards to these revisions, Mr. Prentice.
So keep coming back to some things that weren't really the core notion of the concern. So in phase one, it's going to be a fifteen-member board with nine of those members voting, the six ex officio not. And so all nine of those members are appointed by the Board of Trustees. So ultimately, those nine members will decide the will of the direction of the foundation. And phase two, with a thirty-five member maximum, if some members of the Board of Directors of the Foundation don't like the nine people that are approved by the Board of Trustees, they have the ability to appoint ten more people and create a super majority and make everybody's lives miserable. And I'm just really concerned about the politics of it. You know, we want this to be, you know, an organization to serve the district and students and staff and the mission. And I know we're saying it's not political, but that's often what happens, unfortunately. And it's not so much that it would or wouldn't, it's the fact that it could. And we're trying to prevent that from happening. You know, so when the Board of Directors of the Foundation is appointing the membership in phase two, it prevents there from being these chasms of, you know, engagement from one body versus another that come, becomes severely tilted because you, you literally have twenty additional appointments that that Board of Directors can make to offset a majority of the nine members that would be appointed by the Board of Trustees. And I just don't want to see it become an argumentative, you know, non-productive entity that, you know, doesn't really serve its mission well. That's, that's plain and simple. That's the concern.
And I guess our concern is the same, but the opposite, you know, same but opposite. So.
You still have ultimate authority should the, the foundation not operate the way the mission statement and in the best interest to dissolve it.
Just dissolve it. That's it.
That's what I would do if it goes rogue.
And, and, and the board, you know, ultimately as a component unit of the district can convey its will, you know, through either the members that it appoints as ex officio. It can convey its will through transmitting correspondence to the board, saying, we don't, we are displeased with the direction that this entity as a whole is taking, you know, divergent from that of the organization's mission, and we're asking that you take corrective action, you know, or, and if you don't do so, then we can get rid of you. But, you know, it prevents these chasms within the Board of Directors of the Foundation itself from forming. And that's what really worries me. I don't, I don't want there to be this, you know, us versus them type entity that's created, that just creates more politics. We just, you know, want to carry it out.
Chairman.
So what I'd like to do is I'd like, so that we have the, give the board members, you know, two options. I'd like to make a motion that we keep the language in section five oh two intact with the exception of striking who is to put and, so that would be the districts of Charleston County, and also not an employee or a member of the Board of Trustees, and then strike unless compelling reasons justify an alternative appointment methodology. Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay.
You're just.
And what I'll do is I'll open up for discussion. What I'm, all I'm doing is, is taking the original, you know, I'm removing who have been approved by the Board of Trustees, and I'm just giving a second option so that we can vote how the board wants to on this option, and then if it fails, we move on to the second option.
Can I just make a point? If we're worried about this, like the, the nine and then adding to the thirty-five, why don't we add a clause that the Board of, the Board of Trustees are always have, their appointees always have the majority vote. So you.
No.
Can't do that.
So what I like, what I like to do is, is, is bring up the first motion for a vote. And, and that would be.
Clarify what, what you're bringing up.
And that motion would be to amend five point oh two simply by removing after Charleston County, the word who is and putting, inserting and also not an employee or a member of the Board of Trustees, and striking unless compelling reasons justify an alternative appointment methodology.
I, I am not seeing where you're at. Five point oh two or?
Five point oh two two. What are you talking about?
Yeah, I, I don't see that language at all.
Have the oh two two. Five oh here. Just five point oh two.
Let's see what happens.
Oh, he's, I see where he's at. The paragraph that begins with in phase two, the voting members of the directors.
It's in phase two, right. It's five point, right.
Yeah, I see where you are.
Okay. Read, read to us what your motion is.
Yeah, state it again, please.
In phase two, the voting members of the directors of corporation shall be appointed by the initial members of the directors of the corporation. The board of directors shall determine the number and qualifications of the appointees. But nine of the members shall be residents of each of the nine election districts of Charleston County. Strike who, put in the word, oh no, I'm sorry. Now, who is also an employee or a member of the Board of Trustees. Yeah, it is, strike who.
You keep that and just strike out unless compelling.
That's correct.
And you don't want to, you want to keep initial.
That's correct. Because this is the initial setup. This is the ending of phase two. And we're now going into, you know, with the language here, what would be carried on to fruit, future appointments. And I think that the danger that we're running into, as brought up by Mr. Prentice, is that this board would be a little too involved in appointing nine members. I'm just giving the, the trustees the option. So you've got one of the two.
There is one, one little snippet I want to add. Historically, this board has been very dysfunctional. This is probably the best it's ever operated, just thinking forward, more to your point. I think, I think that's an unstated concern.
Mr. Gobowski.
Yes, Ms. Roberson.
Why do you want the initial members to always appoint?
Point well taken. Is there any reason to strike the, that wording? I mean, it's.
You keep initial, you keep continuity.
Is the question being asked to, to maintain the strike of initial because it doesn't really matter if they're initial or if they happen to get replaced by somebody along the way?
Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
That makes sense.
Yeah. So we could leave the, leave the strike of initial. So at the point at which phase two is enacted, whoever the members of the Board of Directors are would make the final vote to determine who the members beginning phase two would be. Okay. That's logical.
Absolutely.
And so really, the only difference between the two motions is whether we want to take that step of having board involvement or not.
Purely the green who have been approved by the Board of Trustees.
Right.
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 That's a good motion.
That's correct.
But that's one motion.
That's one motion.
You have the second one, correct.
And, and the first one's going to be yours, and then the second one's going to be.
Errol's, correct. So it's, it's really up to, right.
Voting to either, to, to either stick with Keith's motion or, and then after that, we will then vote for.
Right. So with all the discussion, to get this moving on, we will bring up my motion first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So there's three ayes. Any oppose?
Nay.
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 The motion failed. Oh, Ms. Bailey and Mr. Hollingshead.
I said aye, and Mr. Hollingshead had to go to an appointment, so he had to leave.
It's four and four.
It's a, it's four, four.
Four, four.
So four, four vote. Mr. Parliamentarian, as I understand it, the motion and.
No motion.
No motion.
No vote.
No vote.
Motion does not fail.
So we'll bring up the second motion for consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands. All oppose?
Going to be a four, four.
Ms. Bailey? Ms. Bailey, you're going to have to say voice vote.
No, nay.
Four, four again.
So it stays as is.
The language remains.
The language stays as it is.
Moving on.
Any, any other?
Yes.
Yes, now we have five oh two, paragraph five point zero two eight.
Do you kindly use your microphone so that Ms. Bailey and others can hear? Sorry, we're going to do five point zero two eight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Y'all got your whole deck of them grand ass cards.
I think that's a given. That the superintendent has to, and the CFO, yeah, definitely, that definitely has to be.
Ms. Roberson, Dr. Temple, would you like to make the motion?
Yes. Okay, I move to amend section five point zero two, number tenure and qualifications, five point zero two eight, to read as follows. The superintendent of the school district, members of the Board of Trustees, and the chief financial officer of the school district must be provided notice of all meetings in accordance with the provisions of section five point zero four of these bylaws, and may attend all meetings of the Board of Directors in accordance with section five point zero three of these bylaws. Non-voting ex officio members will serve on the Board of Directors to provide insight and perspective so that the work of this corporation is aligned with the Charleston County School District mission and vision as stated in the strategic plan. So what you see is the original.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Parliamentarian, in the future, to make this go a little faster, would it be proper when we make a motion just to acknowledge the changes? So for instance, in this motion, it would be to include the following language rather than having to read it.
Say to add the section five point oh eight, the following sentence. Sure.
Do you understand, Dr. Temple? It just seems like all we would have.
I'd like that.
That way, we don't have to read it back and forth. So the motion before the board is to add the last paragraph. The non-voting ex officio members will serve on the Board of Directors to provide insight, perspective so that the work of this corporation is aligned with the Charleston County School District mission and vision as stated in the strategic plan. Any discussion? Ms. McKinney.
I think that's a given, and it's not a given just for the non-voting ex officio members. The superintendent, the CFO, I think it's been stated that all directors on the foundation are to watch out for the mission and the vision of the statement. We, this is a superfluous statement.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr., I mean, Ms. Roberson.
I think that this is a clarifying statement. If we go back to our frequently asked questions that we turned in, what it does is it, it explains the role of the non-voting members. And I think that's important for us to have in bylaws. It's a clarifying statement.
Any other discussions? Ms. Bailey? Mr. Hollingshead?
He's off.
Hearing none, the motion passes as, or the amendment passes as.
And I would like to request that we give our professionals in the audience and our staff an ability to comment before votes.
Please, that way I will, in the future, ask you first before moving forward because we will move at lightning speed.
I feel so heard.
No, no concerns.
Did you have something with, with this last one?
I think we're fine.
We're good.
No concerns.
Did you have something with, with this last one?
I think we're fine.
We're good.
No concerns.
Mr. Chairman, we have edits for five point oh three.
It's FOIA.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You're getting your workout in today.
Yeah. Dr. Chamberlain, would you like to make the motion?
Yeah.
Ms. Roberson, are these all the same?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't intended to be duplicates. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I move to amend section five point zero three, meetings to read as follows. All of the language stays the same, except that we want to add the Board of Directors shall convene a minimum of four meetings per year.
Second.
And that would be following the addressing, eh, addressing any other pertinent issues is where the language would be.
The rationale is that there was just an annual meeting, and we felt that an annual meeting was a lot to get a lot of work done, and that four meetings would help with the group.
Dr. Temple, would you, would you accept a, a, well, not really an amendment, but in addition to where it says convene a minimum of four, but not limited to?
Well, I'd like, before we take on the request, I'd like staff to respond to Dr. Temple's.
Yeah, we think this is great. We're happy to do it. We were planning on having meetings every other month.
I kind of, kind of felt that vibe, so.
Yeah, I think the language.
They can have more.
Sure. It doesn't, it's not restrictive.
It feels like a constraint.
Yeah.
We're all good with the language?
I'll close it and then bring, Ms. Bailey, have anything to say?
I agree.
I'll bring it up for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, the article is amended as the motion states. What I would recommend, we've been at this at two and a half hours. I think if we could take a recess for ten minutes.
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Second.
We are out of recess. Are all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are out of recess and back into the bylaws. Ms. Roberson, any further amendments to our clock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have amendments to, edits to five point zero six.
What's the change? I know, but, yeah. This should have been green. Okay, this one's easy. I move to remove the S on presence in section five point zero two and if you flip.
Five point zero six.
Um.
Five point zero seven.
I'm just making up things. Okay, in section five point zero six and if you flip, you just take off the S in present to edit.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I would like to bring the motion up for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The article as amended passes. Any further comments or amendments?
Five twelve.
Five twelve. For five twelve, I would like to make a motion to add on to Article five, section five twelve term limits. The language has been presented. A director shall serve a term of three years, period. After serving two consecutive three-year terms, a director shall be ineligible for a term of one year, after which they may be eligible for reappointment. Any discussion? Staff, would you like to comment? Any comments?
Concur, no issues. We concur.
Good.
Excellent. I'd like to close the floor and bring the motion up for vote. Oh.
Just if you can just say section five twelve term limits as presented by the chairman.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, the motion to amend the article to include section five point twelve passes. Any further discussion regarding Article five? Hearing none, Article five is perfected and Article six is now before the board.
Mr. Chairman, we have edits for section six point zero two.
No. I'm just second. Okay, I move to amend section six point zero two number to read as follows. The officers of the corporation. Okay, the only change is in the last sentence. A single individual may not serve as more than one officer of the corporation. So the.
Second.
Second.
So the thing on the back shows we're just adding the word not. The idea here is that we want a variety of people to have opportunities to serve.
Staff?
That's boilerplate language.
And we understand that some positions serve as secretary treasurer.
I think that.
Yeah, but we figured you have forty-five members. Yeah.
I think we can find a secretary separate from a treasurer, which of course you would never have. The president and the vice president, the same, so I think that's really where that falls in line.
I was gonna say, I'm secretary treasurer.
That's because you gifted.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to bring the motion up for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the section is amended as proposed. Do we have any further discussion regarding Article six? Any information request?
I would like to entertain the superintendent and to the two trustees. The ex officios. Becoming voting members. I think it's in section six. I'm looking to see where in section six. I can't remember. I just, by now I was kind of going fast. President vacancies treasurer secretary. I think ex officio is in here, isn't it? It's not?
I think the ex officios is in five, somewhere in five.
No.
Would you have?
Which we passed. Yeah, I'm not finding the ex officios where the section is. But if the board of trustees is completely uninvolved after phase one is over, I would think that the superintendent and the board of, at least one board of trustees should have voting power throughout so that there is some sort of say. I don't know if you guys have anything to say to that. I'm sure you do.
I think my question would be, is that would be contrary or harmful with the five oh one C three status?
Yeah, so, so it's not best practice. Best practice would be that these are voice but no vote. Also, I'd like to point out that in a board of thirty-five people, three people's vote will not sway typically the outcome. So it's, what's really important is that they're there weighing in. And so I think I mentioned earlier that the superintendent in particular, but the school board representative, another district employee, these people have outsized influence. The board is there to, especially the way you've organized it and the way that the foundation is planning to organize their mission and vision. It's very much in support of the district's mission, vision and strategic initiatives. And so the fact that they'll be, I think, often deferring to the ex officio members in terms of what are you seeing as the greatest need and counting those folks as the resource in the room. So I don't think it's necessary. And furthermore, it just presents a better picture that the superintendent is not the person controlling where the dollars are spent. That's the reason that it's not best practice. Because again, to create community ownership, you do not want to create the perspective that this is the superintendent's or the school board's foundation and that they're just directing where all the dollars go. It just keeps other people from wanting to be as involved or supporting it.
Although there are thirty. So like you said, three are not going to be significant, but at least would be able to continue, have a continuum of representation, but that's fine.
Motions or discussion regarding Article six? Hearing none, Article six is perfected. Article seven is now before the board. Any questions, information or amendments regarding Article six? Seven?
Article seven.
Seven? Article seven, correct. Hearing none, Article seven is perfected and Article eight is now before the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Roberson?
We have edits for section eight point one zero. Eight point zero one. We gotta work on our numbers. Y'all are hurting this method. Thank you.
I move to amend section eight point zero one amendment of articles of incorporation, amendment or repeal of bylaws to read as follows. And the only change that we have is in the first sentence, after three point zero one, we want to add three point zero two.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion from staff or trustees?
For their reason.
You want it?
Their reason.
All right, Dr. Temple?
Your reason for.
But it seemed to be an omission.
Because we did a lot of changes to three point zero two and it clarified funds must be donated to public schools. It's the whole purpose that we went through when we edited point three point zero two.
No concerns. No.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the floor is closed and I'll bring it up. Vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the section is amended as per the motion. Any further amendments or discussion regarding Article eight? Hearing none, Article eight is perfected and we move on to Article nine. Any discussion or amendments to Article nine? Hearing none, Article nine is perfected and Article ten is now before the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Roberson?
We have edits to section ten point zero one.
We, on the card before we discuss, in the, in the back of the card where we show the colors in the third sentence, after the school district, the word should be or. What do you want it to be?
Or, I think.
Or? Not.
Oh.
School district. Trustee or district. No.
So the, the, the foundation could also dissolve itself. Yes.
Okay, I'll read it.
But then further describes in the next section that the assets would become the school districts for public purposes. Yeah, so that the assets, we didn't want the self-destruction of the foundation with the assets to be distributed to any public nonprofit, you know, under the law. It would push everything back to the district.
Okay, so in, I move to amend section ten point zero one. Procedure for dissolution to read as follows. And the only change in the, from the original is after we have the word school district, add board of trustees and each director. Add board of trustees, those in between.
Just, just adding.
Just add board of trustees.
You have a second?
Second.
I'll open up for discussion.
Irrational.
Irrational?
Yes, so that the notice can be sent directly to the board of trustees. That's it.
And a a question. This is the procedures for dissolution. So it's upon approval of a vote of at least two-thirds of the board of trustees of the school board or school district or a vote of at least two-thirds of the directors in office at the time it's as soon as approved in a meeting. So it's one of, it's, we have the power to dissolve without the foundation being involved and the foundation has the power to dissolve without us being involved. Makes sense. Any other further discussion? I'll close the voice for discussion, debate for discussion and bring it up for vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, this section is amended as motion proposes. Any further discussion regarding Article ten? Then Article ten is perfected and we will move on to Article eleven. Are there any amendments or discussion regarding Article eleven? Then Article eleven is perfected. And what I would like to do now. I will, I will ask the board, is there any articles that you would like to revisit at this moment?
Yeah, I think for me, for me, five point.
Ms. Roberson?
Thank you. Five point, I'm gonna do it in my head, five point zero two two. The one that remained with the original language because the Thai votes. I would like to, for us to take out unless compelling reasons justify an alternative appointment methodology.
Please put it in a motion, please.
I move that we strike the, the language unless compelling reasons justify an alternative appointment methodology.
Second? I'll second. Any discussion, debate? Questions?
And that, that remains consistent with the other amendment. It was done to remove that language. So that was just a outcome of the vote based on the amendment to the amendment.
We'll close the floor for debate and bring the motion up for vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the article is amended as per the motion. We've considered all articles. The question before the board right now is adopting the bylaws as amended. Is there any further debate?
Just a clarified question. Is this the final vote of these bylaws? And that won't be before the regular board?
So what we will have is something, I will bring a motion to approve the bylaws as amended. Yes.
So the final vote, I believe, is now. It just requires a majority vote.
Correct.
But do we have a motion on the floor? To adopt the Charleston County School District Education Foundation, which is what started our conversation of going section by section. Did, did we make that statement at the beginning?
This would be the vote on the motion to adopt.
That's right, but this is amended, so I have to, I have to make a new motion.
My understanding here is motion is to adopt the you sometimes want to sing when I get in front of a mic. It's to adopt the bylaws of the Education Foundation as amended. And if it receives a second, then it's a final vote.
Is there a second?
We adopt the Charleston County School District Education Foundation bylaws as amended.
Second.
Second.
Lots of that.
Also, will we get a copy of the amended version?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We certainly will. We'll post it for the public and make sure we send it to you, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you.
Is there any further debate? Hearing none, I will bring it up, the motion for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the bylaws pass as amended unanimously.
I think still, I'll grab it for you.
I, I want to acknowledge Ms. Roberson and Dr. Temple. I mean, they did pass out a lot of their concerns and questions. I want to thank staff for a lot of the response and headwork that's made this process a lot easier. I want to thank the trustees for being openly engaged in the discussion. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
And Mr. Grabowski, might we ask if the trustees will stand with staff and get a quick photo before we adjourn?
Absolutely. It's always for the positive ones.
We do our best.
And I appreciate all the public comment.